Call this meeting to order at 6:30. And please stand and pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Item C, adjustments to the agenda.
As you can see, members of the board, there are two recommended adjustments. One would be adding two items to new business. Item four, appointment of a board member to serve on the dropout prevention committee. And item five, appointment of a parent to serve on the dropout prevention committee. And move current items four and five to become items six and seven.
I move that we amend the agenda as outlined by Mr. Higgins.
Second. Discussion? All those in favor?
Thank you.
Thank you. Approval of minutes, January 10th, 2017.
I move that we approve the minutes of the January 10th, 2017 board meeting as presented.
A second up. Discussion? All those in favor? Item E, communications and correspondence.
I have some letters of resignation and a letter of retirement that I'll take up under my report.
Okay, thank you. F, public participation. Item G, administrator and school board reports. Our school board representative is not here this evening. Building administrators' reports, Mr. Clifford.
Good evening. You have my report. First, I'd like to start with eighth grade visits. So they were completed in full last week. And some of the highlights of that is we haven't been to Dedham or Blue Hill in a number of years. And so we got to visit those two schools. And it really came about, they kind of contacted us, students started contacting us about shadowing students from Blue Hill and Dedham. And so then we called principals and said, we have this interest, do you mind if we come over and talk to your eighth grade? And they were more than welcoming. And so that was good, really good for us. And we also had the Sedgwick eighth grade teacher, who we know a little bit, and she called and set up an appointment for a half-day shadow. So she brought over her whole eighth grade, which was 11 students. And since then, we've had six come back to shadow on their own for half a day. So that looks promising also. So the more outlining kids we get, I think, the better. And it just goes to show, I think, we have a lot to offer, a lot of different students around Hancock County. And, you know, so we're really happy with eighth grade visits. Our pool of students is about the same as last year, a little bit bigger with Blue Hill and Dedham and Sedgwick. And so, you know, we hope for another big class next year for our freshmen. And the open house is March 15th, and we're looking forward to that night. It's a big night for us, and we have a committee together, and we're meeting and getting ready for that night and duplicate last year. Unified basketball, I know some of you have gone to some games. We've had two home games so far. We have one more in two weeks, I believe. And they're at 3:30, so I know they're difficult for some adults to get to. But they're, you know, it's real exciting to go to. And the attendance, you know, we only open up one half of the bleachers on the opposite side of the teams, and it's almost full. And, you know, it's been a great experience for our students. You know, I know during the day, they were their unified basketball warm-ups and around school, and they walk the hallways, and kids know that they're on the team, and, you know, they talk about the game, and, you know, it's been a really good experience. And also the students that help out with the unified team, you know, it's been a good experience for them. So that's been a lot of fun and just watching that grow. And we'll get more and more students every year for that. A little, and the last part was winter sports season, so postseason is wrapping up quickly. And so we had a busy day yesterday and Saturday. And just to keep you up to speed, so wrestling first, so we came in second in the state in wrestling. And we had two students that were state champions, so Trent Goodman, who went the season undefeated and finished out with a state championship, and Peyton Cole, who also finished the season undefeated and finished out with a state championship. And we don't cover all the weight classes, so to come in second, you know, is remarkable. And we ended up having four in the championship, but two won them. And they came in second place. Our boys swimming came in second place in the state championship on Saturday also. And they brought home the sportsmanship award. And then yesterday, our girls placed 11th but made it to the state championship, and they also won the sportsmanship award. So, and in swimming, it's not a regional banner, it's a state banner. So that's all of Class B through the whole state of Maine, not just northern or southern. That's how it goes in swimming. And last, Amy Torrey, our resource officer, she joined us two weeks ago, and it's been a smooth transition. It's great having her in school, and I know she's been down to the other schools. And kids are used to seeing her there. She's in the parking lot every morning, and it's been smooth so far, and we're really glad to have her aboard. Any questions on anything?
Thank you.
At the middle school, we have, we will be conducting a survey called the Maine Integrated Youth Health Survey to all seventh and eighth grade students. This is done throughout Maine, and what's nice about it this time around is that we actually get feedback pertaining to the responses our students give on a wide, wide variety of health topics. So that's coming up within the next month. Both fourth and eighth grade are going to be assessed in math and reading on something called the National Assessment of Educational Progress, NAEP. Fourth grade was done last week. Eighth grade is done, is going to be done next week, I believe it is. And we don't get any results from that. We just help the state and we help our country, because that's what it's about. It's getting, kind of seeing a barometer where Maine stacks up amongst other states. We are more than halfway through the school year now, and I just want to report that the new teacher evaluation system has gone very, very well. We meet initially, we met initially with the teachers to explain how the program works. All of us, meaning myself, Amy, and Tim, each take a third of the K-8 population of teachers and have been in multiple times, at least three times apiece, using our new tool. And then we've had our mid-year meetings and have reviewed their SLO, which is their student learning objective, which is the portion of the eval system that measures student growth, because that's a required component at this time. And, you know, we'll see that through to the end of the year, and then we have a kind of a reflection meeting with the teachers as well. So good process, first year, I think it's gone quite well. In co-curricular news, at the middle school, our winter season is pretty much concluded. The basketball seasons ended with all teams having their fair share of wins. We got bounced out of our tournament for the varsity teams in the first game, but I really do appreciate what the kids did and what the coaches did. Cheerleading finished second in the Bucksport tournament, and then finished first in the Bangor tournament, both for our JV and varsity teams. It was nice after coming in second one week to come back and win the next competition. Our interest in robotics is very high. We have over 40 students involved. Twenty of them are meeting now, and 20 of them will start meeting on our second team right after this vacation. I might add that next week, both show choir and jazz band will compete in their regional competitions. The show choir at the high school on Tuesday and the jazz band on Friday at the Brewer Community School. In parent news, we had our winter carnival. If the board meeting hadn't been canceled, I would have asked for some parent help, but the meeting was snowed out, which is okay, because that snow really made for a great winter carnival. And it was really deep snow. I knew it would be, so I called the Black House. They got me Bill Clark's phone number. He's associated with the Ellsworth Snowmobile Club. And they spent like Thursday before our Friday event grooming the Black House hill, and it was perfect. And just a great day for the kids sliding. I'd also like to thank the YMCA. They afforded us a zumba instructor, because that was one of our activities in that afternoon. And our IT crew, I'd like to thank April and Ginger, because I couldn't figure out how to get the karaoke thing to work, and they did. So it was a really good time. And I think that's it. One thing I will say, it's more than a month out, but registration for EHS is the 27th and 28th, so parents ought to be calling the school for high school registration. And I can pretend to be Amy Roper if you want me to go there. I have a report, unless you were planning on doing it, don't want to.
It's up to you, Mr. Newitt.
Well, we collect pennies at the school. Yep, we collect, we're collecting pennies, and because we've had so many snow days that the penny drive for lows and fishes will continue through March, so that's going to continue. Mr. Norwood held his, I don't know how many annual, I was in the small gym the other day, it's got to be about 20 banners that he's done jump rope for heart. And again, students were sent home with a form that would allow them to bring back some money to help the American Heart Association. As I think you heard from Amy a month or so ago, we have this K-3 literacy grant, and it necessitates students to be tested on the NWEA, which is different than our eye-ready assessment. And that is in process. Knowing a kindergarten teacher really well, they've already, you know, they've already actually done the NWEA with kindergarten. So that's going well. And kindergarten kids using iPads, I mean, that's what's going on here. It's good stuff. One music concert was canceled due to the snowstorm, so that first grade concert will be Wednesday, March 8th, and then the second grade concert will follow the following day, Thursday, March 9th. Over this vacation, we're hoping to have K-4 students do a lot of reading. We're hoping to hit the 50% mark of participation over this vacation. So many thanks to those parents that are helping their kids get into a book. Dr. Seuss Day is Thursday, March 2nd. It will be once again celebrated at K through four, and there'll be some activities and a special lunch. I don't know if it's green eggs, I don't know what it is, but it says special lunch, so it should be good. In PTF news, the Tuesday we get back from break, K-8 will enjoy an African dance group. And again, we thank the PTF for funding that for us. And community news, K-8 will participate in the Hancock County Food Drive that starts Wednesday we get back, March 1, runs all through March, and there's matching grant money that goes along with that. So the more food that comes in, the better. Kindergarten registration is taking place this March 9th and 10th for enrolling next fall. Registrations are by appointment. Children don't need to attend and call 667-6241 to make your appointment. That's it.
Thank you. So I think we're down to you.
I believe it is my turn, and because we've rescheduled for vacation week, we did have some administrators who had previous plans, so you have their written reports. My report will be relatively brief. I'd like to echo what Mr. Clifford said, that we've had Officer Amy Torrey join the school department as a school resource officer. I happened to see Amy a couple of days ago, who commented, as Mr. Clifford did, that things are going very well. It's been a smooth transition, and we're very pleased to have this program once again up and running. I want to talk about a couple of things that we discussed at our last meeting. As I reported to you at the last meeting, the Hancock County Superintendent's Association was scheduled to meet on January 19th to continue our ongoing conversation on potential opportunities for collaborative and regionally shared programs and initiatives, and also to review a grant opportunity that was put forth by the Maine Department of Education. Again, this is a conversation the superintendents have been having since last summer, looking for some regional opportunities. We did focus on the Maine Department of Education grant, which is called the Educational Efficiencies and Opportunities Grant. And we looked at it with two of the major areas that we've been talking about, one of which is some ideas around transportation, and another is ideas around regional special education. The two areas that we're looking at require significant study and background work that made this particular grant to the Department of Education not feasible. The grant application is due within a couple of weeks, and what we're looking at for a potential opportunity that will be promote some efficiencies economically, but also enhance the way that we provide programs and services for our students all across the county, really didn't lend itself well to such a short timeframe. With that being said, we know that in the governor's budget proposal, if it survives the way it's initially been presented, there are going to be other opportunities to apply for grant proposals. And we're hoping that some of those will be better suited to the timeline for what we're talking about, for ideas, and also to fit in with what we're trying to do. Now, consistent with the sentiment that was expressed at last fall's Maine School Management Regional Workshop that was held at the conference, and I believe Mr. Markosian was there, there's an appetite in the county to have some discussions around regional efforts. One of the things the superintendents are also talking about is a little later in the spring, setting up a meeting with all the superintendents and leadership from all of the boards to talk about some of these ideas, with the purpose of bringing those things back to our full boards a little bit later on. So the regional piece, and again, I say not regionalization and consolidation, but regional efforts and collaboration are a discussion that's taking place, and we're all very excited about some of the possibilities that are out there. I'd like to transition also into the 128th Legislature and Education Funding. The governor's budget bill, which is LD 390, for anyone's interested, has been presented, and the public hearing process has commenced. I believe today was Department of Health and Human Services. The first day for public hearings on the K-12 education section of the budget is Friday, March 3rd. Among the notable headlines in the budget proposal are the following. There are 48 proposed changes to the current essential programs and services school funding formula. Forty-eight. It's a complex enough law as it is, and 48 changes to a law that's never been fully funded. It will be very interesting to see how that moves forward. With that being said, some of the pieces that are in there will be removing the Title I adjustment that's existed in this formula for a number of years, whereby the amount of Title I funds a district receives is reduced from your subsidy. That's going to be taken out, it will no longer be adjusted, but what's happened to correspond to that is they've changed the student-teacher ratios for calculation purposes. Okay, it's an offsetting change. There's elimination for funding for system administration, which is all of your district office functions, superintendent, finance office, business office. All of those are eliminated from funding at the state level. A transition of $5.5 million in each year of the biennium from what used to be general purpose aid that was distributed to all school departments into what's known as a regional education service agency that school districts may contract with for services. Again, there's not a lot of information out on exactly what that is at this point in time, but it sounds as though there may be opportunities there that go along with the collaboration that we're talking about. But again, that's $5.5 million in each year of the biennium that's coming out of general purpose aid. Additionally, there will be $5 million in each year for grants focusing on collaborations and regionalized services. Now, the positive news out of all that is, we did receive on Friday our preliminary ED 279 subsidy printout, and we've spent a little bit of time reviewing that to determine the overall impact of the proposed changes and where it's going to take us with regard to our budget, and I'll touch on that a little bit more specifically when we get to that item on the agenda. With regard to our staff, we have a new staff member, Bruce Romano, who'll be a new custodian and fields person at Ellsworth High School. And Jake Hackett, who last month we reported to you is resigning and moving on, has had a change of plans, and he's decided that he would like to stay, and we decided we would like to keep him. So he'll be remaining with us. We did have a couple of letters of, for the board. One was Dan Morris, who currently serves as a part-time maintenance man and bus driver, will be resigning his maintenance portion of his position, staying on as a bus driver. And Russ Gray, who's been with the school department for a very long time, is going to retire in the early fall. And we still have a vacancy for special education at EMS. Unless you have, oh, and I'm sorry, one other thing. There's a professional development opportunity being put on by Maine School Superintendent's Association that is open to board members Friday, March 10th, in Augusta, in the Capitol Pine Tree Room. The agenda is school funding in Maine, and the agenda will include some updates on essential programs and services and the changes to the budget. And there'll be some breakout sessions to focus on special education costs, regionalization grants, MLTI, which we're going to have an update for you at a future meeting, system administration, what it is, construction grants, and the current Blue Ribbon Commission that is studying the impact on funding. Again, it's Friday, March 10th. If you have an interest in going, there's a small cost to the district, but we budgeted for it, please let Teresa know, and she can get you registered. Registration deadline is March 28th, excuse me, February 28th.
Thank you. Committee reports. Policy committee, have you? Personnel committee.
Okay, I can report on that. Personnel committee, which consists of Brenda and myself, we've met a bunch of times. We're in the, it's, contract negotiations are going on with teachers as well as ed techs. So we've had a number of meetings with the teachers, and we've had one meeting with ed techs. Second meeting was snowed out, but we're meeting tomorrow morning with them, so.
Okay, thank you. Finance committee. We haven't met, but I'm sure we will be.
We will be, and I'll touch a little bit on what that schedule may be and the item on the agenda.
Okay. Facilities and transportation.
That's another committee that will be meeting in the near future. We're working on the application for the Department of Education construction project for the vocational program, vocational school. And that committee will be active in reviewing that.
Okay. And HCTC will be touched on later, and legislation rep, you?
Oh, I'm the legislative rep. Yeah, I don't have anything to report at this time, but as things are shaping up, bills are being, taking shape and getting, moving through committees and to have something to report soon.
Thank you. Item I, old business. Appears to be none. New business, staff presentation.
I'd like to report that we actually have a staff presentation and student presentation scheduled for the February board meeting, but because of the storms and the fact that we've rescheduled for vacation, we don't have our students here. So we'll be bringing them in in March. We may have two presentations for you that evening.
Consideration of approval of overnight and out-of-state trips.
And I believe you have received information from Mrs. Bowles with regard to Skills USA?
Mm-hmm.
If you've had a chance to review that, again, this is a trip that is done annually. My recommendation is that the board approve that trip as presented.
I move that we approve the overnight out-of-state trip to Skills USA Championships as presented.
All those in favor?
Thank you.
Annual event.
Yes.
And this, whoops, and eighth grade trip.
Eighth grade trip, yes. Mr. Newitt is here, and Mr. Newitt can speak to that.
In my many years, I've never come to you asking for permission to go out of state with the eighth grade, but I am tonight. Last year's class went to Bar Harbor in our backyard. This year's class wants to go to Salem, New Hampshire, where Kenobi Lake Park is located. This is a large-scale amusement park. I'll say similar to Fun Town in regard to, which we've gone to many times, where once we get there, then the kids, you know, are self-contained, basically, and can go on their way. Chaperones are at a central location, and the kids will check in with their chaperones throughout the day. But it's something they voted to go on versus other choices that came up. They've done a fair amount of fundraising already. We're about $7,500 of about $1,100, $1,100, $1,500 necessary to go on the trip. Their big goal is to raise the money so that they can take fancy buses instead of a school bus, so that they have, you know, a bathroom on the bus and monitors on the bus, they can watch a movie or whatever. That's, so the big fundraiser right now is a raffle that'll take place every day throughout March. Kids are selling tickets now, but for every day in March, there'll be one or more than one item up for grabs. And every day at our lunch, we'll pull out a winner. And we very much appreciate the generosity of, I counted over 35 businesses in town that have made donations to that, to that effort. So it's a very nice community gesture to help us on our way. That's the plan. We're going to go on a Friday, so they don't have to wake up the next day, because I think we'll be out late after returning from an almost four-hour drive back from New Hampshire. And Friday, the park stays open later, so we can depart later. So that's the, that's the plan. Because it's out of state, we do need your permission, and that's what I'm hoping you'll grant tonight.
I move that we approve the out-of-state trip to Lake Kenobi Lake, I'm sorry, to Kenobi Lake Park in Salem, New Hampshire, as presented.
Discussion? All those in favor?
Can't wait.
I like your planning of two different dates in case there's a few more snow days.
Well, I've been teaching, wanted to go later. And I think we're going to go on a later date now.
Yeah.
Let's hope we don't have any more snow days, Mr. Newitt.
Consideration of approval of Marine Studies Technology Program.
Yes, for the board's consideration, I know Mrs. Bowles has included information with regard to a proposed new program at Hancock County Technical Center for the coming year. Actually, it's a satellite program that will be housed at Mount Desert Island. But it's a marine service technology program being operated in conjunction with, I believe...
Hinckley?
Hinckley.
Hinckley Bowles.
And you have a copy of the proposed course curriculum. This is a proposal that has gone forth before the Hancock County Tech Advisory Committee that Mrs. Thomas sits on. That committee viewed this as a great opportunity for students, you know, similar to the biomedical program that we added last year. The only difference being it's a satellite program. It will operate similar to the way that the satellite welding program operates in Bucksport. Recommendation from me is that you approve it, and I believe that's the same recommendation that came from the advisory committee. And Mr. Thomas, if you'd like to speak to that.
Mount Desert Island had a marine service course that was in place but was not up to the level of a CTE course. So they have sort of pumped up their program, looked at the skills that they need to get it up to a CTE program, and we felt that it was a great, great opportunity for our students who are interested in marine studies and service technology. And a lot of them come to HCTC and end up in the diesel program, but that's not necessarily the program that is, you know, it's diesel mechanics. This will bring in the fishing industry, the marine side of it, and it will serve our students better, and we think we'll have a population of students who'll be very interested in attending this program.
I move that we approve the marine service technology program as presented and recommended by the superintendent and by Brenda.
A second up. Any discussion? All those in favor? Appointment of board member to serve on the Ellsworth School Department Dropout Prevention Committee.
Okay, and we've provided you with a copy of our policy on dropout prevention. Assistant principal at the high school, Matt Clark, is heading up the dropout prevention committee. By statute and by policy, we're required to have certain membership. One of the members is a member of the school board. And it's noted in policy that's selected by the school board. Another member is a parent that's selected by THE parent group. You see the language in policy that says THE parent group, but we do have more than one parent group. The policy language... The policy language also says if you don't have a parent group, the board may select that parent. So, rather than try to determine which of our parent groups we go to, I believe in a previous year, we had the board select a parent as well. So, first step would be to have the board select a board member to serve.
Is this an after-school, like, right after school?
The meeting time, you know, Mr. Clark is waiting to see what the overall composition of the committee is going to be, and he will convene a meeting. Typically, with the start-out, you'd be talking about one or two meetings to get started, and then the group would determine it after that, but most likely, it would be an after-school piece. But I can't give you a specific date.
Yeah, I would really like to do it, but I can't commit to three, three o'clock in the afternoon. It would have to be evening.
And that may be possible.
I have no problems, you know, Joanne.
Hmm?
The meetings, I mean, I would think that they'd be able to schedule.
Yep.
And you'd have enough notice, you know? Okay?
Yeah, I would do it.
This is just one step along the way of getting, getting that committee together. And one of the purposes of the first meeting would be to actually fill out the remainder of the committee, but I'm pretty certain that Mr. Clark would look at the membership and try to schedule a meeting that meets everybody's schedules.
Yeah, I'd give it a whirl, if that meets the needs of the board.
Well, then, I recommend that we confirm the appointment of Joanne Avery to serve on the ESD Dropout Prevention Committee.
I second that. Discussion? All those in favor? And do you abstain?
Yes.
And it may be a little more challenging to select a parent.
Yeah, especially on the fly.
Mm-hmm. And we could take that again. Remember, this is a rescheduled meeting, we meet again in March. We could table that until the March meeting.
Okay.
But we could, we could put a call out if there are parents out there who are watching this evening who are interested. And I know Mr. Fuller is here, that may be something that gets into the Ellsworth American this week. Please.
Just to contact the central office, contact...
Certainly, yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you, Steve. Then that way, there may be a pool of names for you to consider at your next meeting.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
So, I move that we table this agenda item until the next meeting.
Discussion? All those in favor?
Thank you. All the questions you wanted to know and ask about the budget, we can answer right here, at least at our current status. I have provided you with a report in your packet. Where we stand right now with the FY18 school department budget is that all of our principals and directors have completed their initial budget presentations at the administrative level, and business manager Heller and I are in the process of finalizing those pieces and coming together with a completed initial draft on the expenditure side. Those presentations that came from our principals and directors followed a number of meetings at the administrative team level where we talked about significant items. When I talk about significant budget items, I'm discussing proposed staffing and programs, facilities and maintenance item, equipment requests. We identified those pieces because those are going to compose the bulk of the budget. Following those meetings, our principals and directors went to work with their staff members and completed the rest of their budgets. Carolyn and I, Carolyn Heller and I, are hoping to have, by the time the end of this week, a completed expenditure side of the budget. And at that point in time, we will be having those same principals and directors meet with our finance committee and do those presentations on an individual basis. I can give you some highlights. There are a number of staffing requests that we're looking at when trying to meet the school department and student needs. And a lot of them are based upon projected changes in enrollment and programs. For example, we're looking at carpentry as a program that used to be full-time. We reduced it to half-time a couple of years ago because of low enrollment numbers. We're seeing an uptick in that, so our current budget is going to reflect that as a full-time position. We hope that through the recruiting visits that are taking place, that will pan itself out. If we get enough students, that will pay for itself. As we know, we're also looking at biomedical as another program that we would like to see be full-time. That would also be included in there because we're anticipating with the success of that program this year, additional students to enroll in that program. As we've talked about in previous years, our foreign language numbers are very close to where we could justify having a full-time teacher rather than a half-time teacher, so the budget in its initial draft is going to reflect that. We're also looking at some additional needs in shared staffing between Ellsworth High School and HCTC. As you know, we have the bridge program, we also have dual enrollment programs, and we have staff from Ellsworth High School who are traveling to HCTC at least once a day to provide academic support at HCTC, and we found that there was a bit of a strain on our staff at the high school. So, the initial budget is going to include a teaching position at HCTC for a couple of content areas, one full-time equivalent, and adding the equivalent of one full-time instructor at Ellsworth High School to help meet those needs. And in speaking with Mr. Clifford, we'd like to commend the staff members who are providing those services, they're really doing an excellent job this year. Other pieces that we're looking at in terms of responses to our student data, you know that we have hired through Title I funds an instructional coach for the balance of this year. We're hoping to expand that using Title I for half of the program for next year, but also using local funds so that that instructional coach can work at the secondary level. So, that will be in the budget, and we see that as a great asset in our move towards a proficiency-based model. We're also looking, when you look at math scores, and math scores statewide are a challenge, having a math interventionist, which for those of you who are familiar with it, under Title I, we have a lot of teachers who work in reading recovery or specifically in literacy. You might know some people who have done that, Mrs. Thomas.
I do.
You do? Okay. We're looking at having a similar person on the math side, and that's included in the budget as well. One other area that we're looking at is when you look at the amount of technology, hardware, software, infrastructure, the needs of the IT department are varied, and the number of requests for tickets for assistance are very overwhelming, so we're including an additional staff member there. So, those are some of your major staffing highlights. Also, some things that you'll be seeing in the future would be, once again, the HCTC roof. We know that that's an item that is going to need to be replaced one of these years. This may be the year. That's included in the initial draft of the budget. We also know that there are some needs for equipment for the biomedical program. Some of those will be coming at a local cost, and again, that's contingent upon the number of students that we get, but also some construction work at HCTC to help house that program. We're looking at the replacement of two school buses and continuation of maintenance projects that are being phased in over a two- or three-year cycle. So, your initial draft of the budget's going to see a lot of those types of items in there in addition to the regular things that you see. We talk every year about unknown factors, and typically, that's around revenues. One of the factors, and you heard Mr. Clifford speak, he's completed his visits to all the sending schools and had positive visits. That's one of the unknown factors that we have, how many students are going to come from our sending communities to attend Ellsworth High School and take advantage of the fantastic programming that we have. As we move forward through the spring and start to learn how many students are committing to Ellsworth, we'll be able to finalize those numbers. And Mr. Clifford has completed his visits, but the HCTC staff is going to be starting their visits over the next couple of weeks. And that's another area where we'll learn how many students are going to come and take advantage of the programs that we have and outstanding programming that we have. Certainly, we'll tweak those as we move forward. The other piece that's typically the biggest unknown is what are we going to get for state subsidy? Well, you heard me say earlier in the meeting, we actually received a preliminary subsidy report last Friday, and at least in its initial sense, and I'm going to stress that, its initial sense, it's a positive move for the Ellsworth School Department. We're slated to receive an increase in general purpose aid when you consider subsidy and debt service of approximately seventy-seven thousand dollars. That's a very positive trend. Now, the other piece that's positive, we all know that there is another factor known as the required local mill expectation. This is the amount of money that you're required to raise locally to receive your full state subsidy. The current proposed budget at the state level will reduce the mill rate from eight-point-three to eight-point-two-nine, a seemingly small number, but when you apply it to the valuation of the city of Ellsworth, it does add up a little bit. So, combining a decrease in that mill rate and a slightly lower three-year average valuation that's used in that formula, our required local contribution to the cost of education will decrease by about thirty-five thousand dollars. So, we're looking at, right now, as it stands, to the good, about a hundred thousand dollars. Now, I want to stress that those are preliminary numbers, and they're positive, but state budget deliberations are in the very earliest stages. And when you look at the number of policy issues that were included in the education budget, and I refer back to the forty-eight changes in the school funding formula, some would argue that the state budget is not the place for policy discussions. That may be a separate discussion, but this is where we are. We may see some changes to what that subsidy level is over the course of the spring, but at least in its earliest returns, it's a very positive piece for Ellsworth. So, we'll be able to factor that into the work that Mrs. Heller and I are doing this week, and hopefully, provide a very positive picture for a budget for the school system for next year. Now, as we move forward through the budget process, we'll work closely with our finance committee and provide the full board with regular updates, and devote at least one workshop to the budget where all five members can be there. And certainly, we will do what we've done in the past couple of years, is work closely with the city council finance committee as well. As in previous years, we anticipate a timeline where you, as a group, will approve the school budget either at the April meeting or a special meeting in late April, early May, and then present formally to the council in May. And the budget validation referendum, I believe, will be on June 13th, 2017. So, that's, that's where we are right now. That's the path moving forward, and I know that's a lot of information, but if there are any questions, I would certainly try to entertain them right now.
Negotiations update. We're going to go into executive session.
If it may please the board, before we do that, we'd like to cover the calendar and meeting schedule.
Oh, okay, I can do that.
Yeah.
Okay. Meeting schedule, Personnel Committee, February 13th and February 20th.
Twenty-second.
Twenty-second. That's tomorrow, right?
Yeah.
Uh-huh. School Board meeting, February workshop on the 28th at the conference room for the Ellsworth School Department at six o'clock. Policy Committee meeting to be announced.
And if I may interject, what we're going to try to do is to restore the former schedule where we meet on the first Monday morning of the month.
Okay.
And we'll be reaching out to the policy committee members before this week is out to see if we can get that set up.
And School Board meeting, Tuesday, March 14th, 2017, City Hall, Council Chambers at six-thirty.
So, since that's the extent of our agenda, other than the negotiations update, I move that we enter into an executive session under 1 MRSA 4056A for the sole purpose of an update to negotiations.
Before you do that, can we go back to the 28th?
Mm-hmm.
You're not going to be here on the 28th.
Or workshop.
Right. For that, okay. I have a commitment at the high school for the show choir. Paula was questioning whether you would be also at that show choir event, would your son be involved with that event on the 28th?
Now that you mention it, yes, I believe I would be.
He's in the, he's in the, he's in the pit crew, right? So, is it possible that we could...
I recommend we look for an alternate date. I think it's a workshop we'd like to have because the last one that we lost, it was going to be an update on where we are with our transition to a proficiency-based model. I know our administrators have got some good information to provide to you. Would you like me to go back and see if we can find an alternate date?
Please?
Yeah, okay.
Thanks for catching that.
So, Paula's made a motion.
We have to touch a small window for our show choir. We only perform once.
Yeah. If you have a motion on the table.
I second that one.
Okay. Discussion? All those in favor?
So, we'll be in session by seven-fifteen.